Okay, is everybody ready to rock and roll? Uh, in that case, it is six oh six. I called the city council meeting of April eighteenth, twenty twenty three to order. Roll call, please. Oh, here, here.
Yes, 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 yes.
Oh, yes, I'm present. Here.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, I would ask to approve the agenda. Is the agenda without change?
Yes. I thought a philosophy we voted out in public comments at the end of our meeting as well.
I agree with that. I put it in here as a note. I intend to do that in the note, so I'm going to suggest that. Thank you for putting that out.
So, I, whatever I'm supposed to say, move to, um, thank you, I move to approve the agenda with Matt Smiley.
Yes, I am. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any objections? Great. All in favor. At this time, we have housekeeping matters. Anybody want to talk about before we get to the meeting?
I'd like to move on to the agenda. Thank you.
I would like to mention that, uh, it's not an action item, but, um, possibly we should give some thought to, uh, Mr. Marge, uh, sent me a note today asking if we would consider leaving the diagonal parking on Fifth Street, but then making the other side of the street no parking on the parallel parking side of the street. And I thought, she said we gained a few parking spaces. Um, so, um, not really much of a conversation. I don't know what anybody thinks about that. Uh, right now, we're on track to move the diagonal parking and put in place parallel parking, hopefully by the end of this month. Any thoughts on that from your floor?
So she was proposing to leave it, but not have any parking on left hand.
Yes, and that would save us some, it would, it would increase parking by some, a lot of the calculation.
It would be first on the south side.
Yep.
I think, can I say, in respect of the homeowners in the south side of Fifth, we will have no street parking, we will do it in the north. So we may, we may trade it off, we'll park this place and put the, most of our, this, street parking, this is the, you can consider.
Mike, thank you very much. I think it's a good point. There are only a couple homes it would affect, but it would affect it. Okay, um, anyway, I don't know if you like, but that, that was a suggestion that came from Mr. Marge today. I thought it was worth at least bringing up. Uh, any other housekeeping matters? Okay, at this time, uh, we would like to hear from the public. Anybody in the public who would like to speak on items on our agenda, come up and introduce yourself. Give us your address or three minutes.
Okay, let's see, it's thirty five, I didn't understand. Now, the last one, I must be a senior, I don't know, I don't know, who's in, I don't know, say who it is. Please, you enjoy them. So, he was a child, such a wish law, this is prosecution, challenging to the party, who, in the paper, wanted to improve. And, more or less, he probably said, it's there to protect the rights of the people against the government, in terms of justice. It's not to protect the government against the people. It seems like it, we have this, 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 the government. Now, you know, I've been thinking about these, uh, conflicts of interest. Um, you know, I've been getting serious with many, in, in, uh, we have conflict of interest with Mr. Robey and his real estate investments and calling it a third rule, when those things is associated with, and take away our home, so you can make it real estate. Uh, we have a conflict of interest with Sarah Marge and, um, uh, Sarah Dallas, uh, period, had a, um, public, um, freedom sidewalks and having pressure in there that have been taken, um, which, we have a conflict of interest with one of the council members in her job, with the town, he's got a conflict of interest with the Michigan Court Judge, in her job advising the jury, um, and we had a conflict of interest with, uh, how we, we meet needs. Is there a need now, to get to the, to the more needs? Alright, so, um, just, um, well, first of all, there was a that, uh, Garrett paid two hundred K to Sarah, uh, this, this sexual harassment for one of the judges. He went over and reported the incident to her media supervisor the same day, but after two years, court leadership still not taking action. And the other girl from, uh, Colorado, this Supreme Court, she, um, uh, Judge Thomas in Supreme Court, um, saying he saw guidance from these colleagues and other commissioners, they were going to advise these personal, now he was okay with that he was in jury. And at the same time presenting to the public, he loved her, being the one, being the patient. So, um, I'll have to write something up, this conflict of interest.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, anybody else in the public? Yes, please. Come up, introduce yourself, wear a dress, you have three minutes.
No, I'm Dan Levine, and there are two reasons we don't, we're not so neat.
Assets to reverse it is going to be a lengthy process, but she's in much better shape today than when she was when she gave away that money. And unfortunately, uh, these scams exist. Uh, I don't quite know. I think it's probably through social media how she was identified. But uh, she feels a lot better now with cooperation given and the fact that she at least is going to be able to perform what they have. Any questions?
Um, I have one more thing that I should have brought up and I'm sorry, I'm talking so much tonight. Um, but um, I wanted to say thank you to Officer Ortega. Um, my dog escaped on Easter Sunday while we were at brunch. And he was the kindest soul when I called looking for her to see if she had been hit or had been turned in and taken to the shelter. Luckily she was picked up and uh, came back home. His kindness uh, meant the world to me.
Any other comments or questions for the please chief? Thank you very much. Hope that rules gonna be okay. Uh, next up, we have the fire department.
Hey, Mr. President, uh, I just have a quick report for you today, uh, tonight, uh, talking to you in June, 100% service.
We That was quick.
Yeah, it was, really was. It was, uh, um, you know, Bo and Cass, uh, was able to really get on it. Uh, during the time off, I also allowed some, some, uh, time to get, make sure that we put everything on there and get all good. You know, when you, when you receive that piece of equipment, you add to, you know, install all the latches and, you know, and the stuff that holds the equipment in. And then you have to put it in there so it's operational. And then we went through all three of the discs and we're out and pumped it and um, I learned the vehicle itself, I'm sure there's gonna be a little bit of, still a little bit of a learning curve for it, but um, it's paid operational. So I'm pretty happy about that, considering the fact that it is put in drive. Uh, down to station two, the final fire inspection was done today. Uh, there's good little things in him fixed and uh, but other than that, they're down to the trim and finish work. Being done on that, on that facility down there. So anticipation, I'm hoping probably late May. Um, if you ever actually utilize the facility, have people move in, residents move in, the office is open. And it's sometime in June, we're probably gonna do a ready randomly. So, stay tuned for that. Um, at the training center, we just received uh, material to start building out new burn rooms. So we're gonna do one on the third division out on, uh, the training center. So we're putting an additional burn room here. And that just kicked off and we're using different material this time. Uh, we're gonna try something a little bit different to see if it's longer lasting. So, uh, there's no, no timeframe on type of one yet. They're just checking boy at it, trying to get um, ready for us to pick up. The two grants that we received for bunker gear, those pieces of equipment are playing with them. Uh, it was set up here and they're coming in with fifteen sets. So um, with the four sets that we received off the operational budgets, you know, we'll have nineteen sets this year, two grants in the operation budget, which will give us plenty enough to take care of our career staff, meet some PA standards and then also have uh, sets for our resident service program. Speaking of that, we hired four residents and now we have seven. So one, I'm sorry, one reserve, six residents. And uh, station should, station two should be full down there when it opens. So that's wonderful news. So now their training begins uh, to be able to supplement our, our responsibilities. Less than four went through. That's the company who went through to try to get our SFPs um, upgraded. And uh, so we were starting that process. We really look forward to that. It was one of my goals this year to be able to do that. And um, looking forward to be able to get that foundation done in that form and I started our standard operating procedures.
Okay.
Have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? I do. Um, what currently are any of your agencies using the training center? Cause that was the ultimate goal.
The only other agency that's using the training center is the only one.
Okay, that's good.
Currently, uh, but I have talked about it in nature agency about getting the other uh, agencies involved. And we'll hopefully do that sometime soon. I've talked to the emergency manager as well. And it'll be a process and hopefully we'll kick something off either this year or next year.
Are you gonna have to have, you know, a, a set of, of procedures for use of that? Uh, do you have that in place now?
No.
Okay.
But I've talked to Chief the Can about getting those, getting those in order.
Seems like that'll be important as soon as other agencies are using the training center.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're working on the, well, the MOU of now that Carmen's gone, I mean, where that's at, it wasn't Chris's hands as well. I don't know where the MOU is for station two, but we're kind of getting, we're trying to get that paperwork finalized and then we're gonna show it in training.
Great, thank you. Uh, resident reserves, I mean, they, they can't stay at station two yet, right? Is that correct? Uh, and they're six weeks out from being able to stay there?
Probably.
As far as you know, what, what are they doing in the interim? I guess.
We have three still over here in the housing.
Right, but now you have six total.
Yeah, and now the, the other three are just hanging with, you know, I think there's two up still in the um, farms in Seacase.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other questions for Chief Taylor? Great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
So excited about.
Yeah.
Next up, we have the streets department.
Good evening, State Council, good evening. Um, this last month, we've been concentrating on moving the last of the steel files and everything. We've had a lot of help with the weather. Not so much when it gets cold, it can start snowing again. Uh, we do have another storm coming in, but we're still kind of halfway prepared for that. We're only taking part of our equipment apart for the springtime. Uh, we're concentrating on checking all our ditches and culverts and getting those in line. Uh, we didn't have to use a steamer yet to clean out any of those. They've been melting off fairly decent with weather, way it's been going. Uh, we're gonna start cleaning what needs to be cleaned and addressing some of the issues on the rural west side where there are gonna be some ditches, there are gonna be some culverts that are probably need to be replaced, but we're expecting those right now. And just making sure that we know where everything is going into. Uh, as far as preparing for pot hole season, uh, we're waiting to we're waiting to find out when the company has the material ready for us. And I'll be sending it up down to get about probably twelve to fourteen tons of uh, materials. So we'll just start doing all the pot hole. And we've got a few of them. I've had a few phone calls about them, but we are working hard and planning on getting that here as soon as possible. Weather hole, we should be able to start next week if we can get the material. We did receive some new tires for one of our loaders, which is a good thing. Uh, tires have been bad shape. They, they needed to be replaced for some time, but we finally did get them. And so now we're completely set on tires. Uh, the equipment is doing well. Other guys are maintaining everything, taking care of everything that they need to and keep it on top of them to make sure everything is functional. Uh, like I said, we did leave the U blades on just in case you do get a snowstorm, but we need to pop. Hopefully we're kind of done with that now, because everything is drawing, drawing out very nicely. Uh, we're also going around assessing the streets, coming to decide on what possible streets we can pave this summer. Our budget is a lot lower this year compared to what it was last year. So we may only be able to do this more severe streets. Well, we're in the process of evaluating like that and we'll run a fight. I'm gonna show you just in there here. How long do you get that to go? Um, other than that, I believe we're sitting good right now. Guys are, are ready for springtime. We've got a lot of TUPs coming up for a lot of the trades and stuff, and we're getting all our signs ready and stamps. Here at this, we're ready to follow these. That's it. If you have any more questions?
Any questions for the street department? I would say it was brought to our attention recently, I think it was Tracy, but uh, the subsidances on, multiple subsidances on Sixth Street. Of E six. And uh, could you give us some insights into what, what little we know about that right at this point?
I talked to Greg Peter at Hartville and we were up there and we inspected all that. And when you start getting up to about four hundred, five hundred block in higher, I'm sixty two, most of it in the center of the caving. And so what he's explained to me is that back in the early nineteen hundreds, late eighteen hundreds, they have miners that were out of work. And then when they had to do the piping that they started putting water mines in, they actually built wooden tunnels around pipe. And what's happening now is all of those are starting to cave in. And that's why you're getting sections that are caving in. So when they've been cutting into those woods uh, throughout the years, what they're doing, they're just replacing what they have to at the time of the break. Once that wooden box caves in, unknown damage to the pipes, you start having problems. Uh, their recommendation is uh, we dig up the whole thing and replace what we have to. They're willing to work with a collaborative deal between the city and Hartville, but that's still talks and we have to talk to them and find out exactly what's in the table. That's gonna be one. Find a bit of digging, a bit of hours to pick out this problem.
Is there no temporary? Like those, like what I was talking about, those steel plate or something on the first area that we could until, because who knows when the water department's gonna and they didn't say they're gonna redo our water line for four years on our streets.
Well, they're, they're still gonna be doing from the main lines to what they need to on the side. It's just this whole main line right in the middle. Needs to be, there has to be a lot of work on that. Uh, we can look into the metal plates and see what we can do with that. Uh, the only problem with that will be is finding that kind of metal and amount of metal sheets that we would need for that. It's gonna be very complicated. So we can look into that as well. Uh, now, now, but I've been looking at it. I, I understand what you were talking about. Um, it's a lot of detail involving this here, but we are looking at it.
I would say maybe just as a thought, you could call your rec, rec, rec this event. I think they have some of those plates that I don't know if they'd be willing to let us use them or not, but they use them uh, when they're, when they're doing some of the excavations. Um, cause you know, they're, they're budgeted to uh, close up mine shafts around town when they appear. Anyway, that's just a thought. Okay. We can talk about that later, but that's, that's a good idea. I'm not sure what else we do, but I, I went to the Hartville meeting last week and we talked about that and Greg, he says it's, it's not directly their responsibility and he explained why. It was that, that, that tunnel was built in eighteen seventy nine. And uh, and so when Hartville Water came into existence, they didn't take possession of that. He, he's got the paperwork he's supposed to be getting to. He said, I need to see it, but that's what we all look at right now. But they're willing to do a cooperative effort. Uh, we may just have to dig all that up and, and redo it. So. All right. Any other questions for street department? Thank you, Tony. Next up, animal shelter.
Uh, so our total numbers as of March have been fifty nine animals of what we've taken in. And surrenders have been nine, we've thirty strains, eighteen of them have been reclaimed. Twelve have been unplanned. We did ten holes. Uh, holes are for like medical, housing, people in need. Uh, and then we did do four transfer ins. And then intake means for the ones that have been reclaimed, the seventeen of them needed re-possessings. And then eighteen also needed to be licensed as well. So a total of thirty five. And we had fifty two outcomes, twenty three adoptions, twenty eight returned to owner, one transfer out. And then um, kind of an upcoming, um, then at the lovely, he has money to buy a new washing machine that we needed. Having a commercial washing machine is going to make a huge difference versus just one they use at home. We do a lot of laundry, more than what's your standard washing machine can do really. And we have been also going to full circle and doing some education programs with them. And we started that last month and we're gonna continue it. And then um, we're also planning a repossessing and licensing and Mountain View Village in April to help out, out part of our community. And, and then a few things, um, events that we're doing is May, we're doing Cloud City Youth Program. In June, we're gonna do a fundraising event that Plan Pet Hood is going also. Um, in July, uh, tentatively, we're gonna do a yard sale. August, we're doing a check your chip. So if you have an animal and you want to bring them, see this microchip, we'll scan it for you to be sure it's all up to date. And October, we're gonna do a Halloween event. And then November, we're doing an end of the year foster and volunteer appreciation. This week is volunteer appreciation, just um, um, and then summer, we're gonna do another fundraising event. And then, yeah.
Any questions for the animal shelter? I, I have a, you know, I, I would like to compliment you on getting a new washer dryer. Is it installed yet?
No, you're just.
Okay. And I wanted to thank Plan Pet Hood. Uh, they, they, they just never have. It was a very expensive uh, unit, uh, with the washer dryer, uh, but I think it'll be well worth it.
We appreciate the opportunity partner, the animal shelter, and also wanted to thank them for this day in our state and replying to pray a couple to get them and hammering some registrations for that. We're working towards much better and cohesive working relationship with means more of these solutions.
Very nice, so appropriate. Um, one more, the, the, the vaccine clinic in June, where's that gonna be done?
We haven't decided. We might be doing it at Lakeport. Uh, we're trying to go to the areas that need it most, that might not be able to come to us. Um, but we haven't already been pointed yet. So if it's not at Lakeport, it most likely will be at the shelter.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have deputy civic clerk, license report.
Um, all of our current business licenses are updated. I'm still waiting to hear back from probably about twenty five people who have received a certain notice. Uh, those went out on March twenty third and all liquor licenses are in process and updated. There's only one that's in process right now. And it doesn't.
Any questions?
Looks like our short term rental, um, cap is working. We have eleven folks on the waitlist for twenty three, twenty three, twenty four grant license.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, building department, we, we have this report from the county. Gives us some idea of, of the volumes and you can see they, they've ticked up uh, in March as you would expect.
Hey, council, one interesting one is all five of the new homes, uh, that were permitted, our modular homes.
Interesting.
In March.
Okay, we have planning department next.
All right, good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, so in your back of the cage, twenty four, I have my monthly report. Uh, here's the project applications. Um, I want to just point out that the thirteen lot subdivision on East Street, that the council recently moved the mole subdivision. Is actually a replat for the sixteen lots of thirteen lots. Uh, we did take in thirteen thousand dollars to plug into school district or uh, part of the. That's, that was part of the communication being blue, uh, that was passed by the council uh, a few years ago. And in terms of pre-application projects, I've been talking with Circle K, they would like to install six EV charging stations in, uh, which would be the south of the gas station, just the south of the gas station. To be an expansion of the gas station. I think there's opportunity there to require some public improvements as part of that project. Uh, some of the works, driveway, um, I guess designation for interest, you're asked to make that, um, that wide swath pavement for uh, safety for pedestrians and vehicles. Uh, so I have lucky out there to note that the, um, city councils wouldn't be expecting some improvements there uh, in terms of increasing traffic to that site. Uh, for electric vehicle charging stations. So uh, we can expect to see P applications at one point here soon. In terms of construction, um, I didn't mention it just last, last month, um, we had five permanent structures, but we're all, all on door. Uh, we did, this one we did, um, sign off building permits for two new single family houses. So new construction is definitely coming in uh, in terms of inbuild throughout town. In terms of the rail yard, uh, we did have our consulting civil engineer uh, up here this week to begin the inspection process for the phase one public improvements. There was a, a drainage um, issue that happened last week with the rapid warming we had and a big snow melt here. Uh, so the, the city's consulting engineer is evaluating that bearing a comment letter um, regarding to the um, drainage infrastructure of rail yards. And uh, we're planning with code amendments right now. Uh, so I've been working with the city attorney regularly on the and uh, the uh, table uses um, and definitions code update project. That will be going to public here, the search public here in Plains Zone Mission next Wednesday. And I will come to council uh, mid May for a perjury. The uh, historic district code amendments, we had a fairly successful open house. We had seven attendees. Um, we have done additional um, advertising for the next open house, which will be May ninth. And then that will come back to city council of uh, before it moves to Plains Zone Mission, we'll come back to city council uh, in early June. Those are some things you can expect, I mean, coming here with, um, the policy advisor team recommendations. There was a, a really great work session at Plains Zone Mission last week. And so we can expect to um, uh, to work on the ordinance um, going in like late summer and going in in the fall in terms of that coming to council. And just in terms of other miscellaneous updates, um, I did implement a cash deposit agreement process for ongoing construction projects. So what that means if someone is building a home and they are finishing home in winter time and they're expecting to receive their, there's a certificate of occupancy, but there is remaining work that's outside, cannot be completed due to weather, it cannot be inspected. Uh, so for example, final green, um, if you have two hundred feet of snow against the house, it can't inspect the green. So I did have implemented a cash deposit agreement process that basically requires um, property owner, contractors, there's a bit of funds um, so that they can receive their CO, um, but then we have funds to ensure that the work is completed by the end of the summer and inspected. And the last thing is they've just been following the Senate bill or Senate bill twenty uh, two thirteen and um, essentially I've determined, you know, my understanding that that bill does not currently apply to us. Uh, we don't meet the criteria. But it is an interesting bill um, that is affecting zoning, could potentially affect zoning regulations for mountain communities. That's interesting.
I've never seen CML as adamant about a bill as they are about opposing that bill.
Right. I'm interested to hear about that and for the, the annual conferences.
Uh, real quick, you said the school district, you know, got a fee in lieu.
Yeah.
Did they negotiate that?
No, it's, it's uh, uh, required per code and there's a calculation in the code for the, for the exact amount. And it increases uh, each year for.
Okay, I didn't realize that because I thought the code said that it was between the school district and the developer, whoever that was.
It's, it's a, it's a requirement in our Title sixteen subdivision regulations. And uh, it can be added as a condition approval for this project it was.
Okay, interesting. Um, on that, um, the, the Circle K.
Yeah.
You know, they've got like a hundred and fifty foot uh, street cut. Uh, have you talked to CDOT about that?
No, at this point, I'm not an application side.
Just curious, you know, whether they're gonna get involved in that conversation because they may have some rules about how, how big of a street cut is allowed. You know, could they have two of them at fifty feet each or three or something like that? I, I just don't know, but I know they could be uh, pretty strident about uh, about access off of the highway.
Right. Well, definitely want to refer this to CDOT. I do, so I do have some understanding of this area that rolls over from just working on the Community Justice Center project and CDOT's involvement. Um, so it's, you know, it is my understanding that, you know, CDOT is concerned about visibility coming around, you know, the curve uh, northbound in, in the town. And um, and then, you know, I think the city, you know, would uh, pedestrian improvements are definitely warranted there um, to get pedestrian connectivity. For example, with the Community Justice Center site, um, north, um, you know, north, north and south.
Most of those, it's interesting, I, I, they originally talked about three EV charging stations, so six is even a better number.
Uh, three stations, two charger pieces.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Got it. Maybe that's what.
They will be located vacated, uh, chest of my street driveway. Um, so it's my understanding that go after Tampa lease from the county, because that would technically be the county to be owner the, the southern half of the vacant driveway. And then the rest will be uh, is actually their, their property will stay acquired through the driveway vacation.
It's also my understanding that their EV charging stations, we have a level three, which is a fast charger. These will be much faster than that because they're gonna have almost triple the power uh, available at those stations. So they'll, they'll be pretty fast charging.
Right. And it sounds, I've been talking to a lot of our folks on our team, but you know, it sounds like this is all part of, you know, I'm sure everyone's aware, big nationwide shift. Um, you know, including the, you know, the gas stations to, to try and provide um, alternatives and, you know, we're a great location, you know, to have this kind of return in between, you know, whatever. Communities down valley and I seventy four.
Great. Last question for you. When, when you're reviewing an infill application, uh, do you check to see if it's in the national overlay district?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you very much.
I also had one question concerning Bill two fifteen, some of the fifty. I know that we don't necessarily uh, meet the criteria to forcefully uh, change those codes or followed by those codes, but has been a consideration to. I, I know that we've already done some work to kind of align with those, with that bill's code changes. So it wouldn't be a huge change, but I imagine there's still some changes if we were to fully align with the code changes that they've recommended. Has that been a consideration that uh, we've had to just go along with it, even if we don't necessarily meet the criteria?
Yes, uh, so I guess my answer would be, I, I think that um, you know, the planning of his own mission, city council um, staff is all preliminary weighted in a lot of these code amendments that we're making, which are, like you mentioned, directly aligned. So we have a plan and action pretty much this year to, you know, to, to make code amendments for things like allowing multi-family, um, not just having, you know, single families. A lot of multi-family rights, um, you know, in, in increasing, potentially increasing density, having the options for uh, like a uh, density bonus, which will allow for affordable housing. So a lot of these things are already in, in the bill. We, you know, we're working on our own this year. So I think, I think we're on the right path. These things are aligning.
To, to your point, I think it'd be interesting to see, are there any gaps left between what we're doing? And we're being very proactive that I, I looked at some of the bill. I don't know that I read all that thoroughly, but looking at it, I said, we're already doing this, you know, so it's pretty cool.
I guess that was my most main question is I agree with you, uh, Mayor, that when I looked at it as well, well, we're, we've already planned on making these changes seeing if there were any other changes that maybe we were missing, but I don't think it said anything that we're too pressed on.
All right. It's, you know, it's density is, it's allowing the family housing and ADUs will allow, and allow ADUs by right. So those are from what I recall off the top of my head, those are the three big components of that.
I would like to add, uh, in terms of that bill two thirteen of, I, I don't have any essential issues with the bill itself. What CML objects to is that it takes away, you know, the zoning prerogative of municipalities. And that's, that's their objection, not, not the, the internal workings of the bill itself, so.
And I, and I, my last little plug is the, the big thing that's, I mean, in terms of global control, it's important for, you know, how locals on the regulation is when you start, and I've, you know, permission to assume, uh, Mayor, what time is the power of development agreements and, and annexation agreements if they have, you know, so annexation agreement is a big, uh, development agreements can happen anywhere. You know, you were bringing in full bill in town where someone is not meeting a certain requirement and then they go to council. And then they go to council, basically, a contractor council will have that required, weigh that in exchange voluntarily by a new restriction for a affordable housing. So there's there's some powers outside of the zoning code that that are, that local control benefits.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, please.
Uh, yeah, Chayvin, you were talking about the C of R for perhaps uh, final grading outside that we can't get to in more time. Question about the rail yards, a lot of that work is still exposed ground without any soil amendments, grass around any of the the homes, for the most part, I think there's a few that do. Um, how would they be, including the common areas in there? So how are we approaching them putting down sod and making sure that of certain, like, any sort of sediment that is exposed to raindrop or melting doesn't go into a sewer sewer or something? How how is that being addressed? Because I don't see much going on there when it comes to uh, them final grading and putting the landscaping on. And I would think as a homeowner, they probably won't get it as well.
Right, yes, that's a great question. And so I have a couple responses that are helpful, everybody's that are addressing that. So so first of all, we haven't, we have not accepted this subdivision. So the 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 public improvements have not been accepted to the city of like those streets, sidewalks, parks. Um, we haven't received needs of dedication for, you know, open space tracks and then all the tracks, et cetera. But, um, so this is not an accepted subdivision. The other response is that we're we're not issuing building permits, say, per building permits. And that's as far as the subdivision improvements agreement, that is um, one of the options for enforcement in terms of making sure that if things are being done the way that they're supposed to, that we are, we have something to say, okay, we're not going to continue allowing for building to happen. So that, so we're already getting that and we are considering further, internally considering further enforcement, we're respecting that right now. Um, going going forward, so, uh, so when we have new building permits that are being issued. So I am requiring, I will be requiring a site plan. And that site plan, when it goes through a building permit, will be required to be accompanied by a construction management plan. So that is essentially page one of the construction documents. And that construction plan includes erosion control methods, so for example, straw lawns or silvers. I haven't had the opportunity to implement that construction plan requirement because I have an authorization for building permit. Um, so I'm using what I can, or working what I can for for projects that are already constructed. Um, going forward, have a plan to make sure that further projects, further construction is not contributing to seven transport downstream.
Uh, I gotta just say, as a Leadville citizen, I'm extremely grateful for your presence here as our client director and holding the table. And so I say thank you very much for getting us to where we should be, where we should be.
Yeah, you guys, thanks.
Yes, Tracy.
For L E R, it's phase two. You're talking about this ten foot utility, it's been where he doesn't want to run electric. Where other communities are banning natural gas and only runs in electric, it seems like you're going backwards.
Well, the city does not have any requirements, any requirements for um, for what kind of utilities the developer must provide. We have a building code and so development is required to meet the building code. And so, I guess, best way to say this is when the developer first told us that that he did not want to comply with any with Excel energies, eastern requirements for for the power lines. Um, and he was proposing, you know, an alternate solution. He said, okay, but you have to make make sure you meet building codes. Your next meeting, your next phone call, so you should build an apartment. Make sure, this is my plan, I'm going to be able to meet the, you know, two thousand eighteen. Um, so, I mean, I'm, if there is solar that, on site solar that can provide energy to meet the building code thing. All right, uh, if there is another option, equally natural gas that meets the means code, then it means so. Um, but, you know, we'll we'll see what can actually be designed and and you build it good.
Any other questions or comments, Jake? I'd like to echo Councilman for Jetsy, sure, glad you're here.
Be here, thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, next up, we have the sales tax comparison. This is through three months. We we were pretty bold last year in in chasing the the dollars available rather than leaving them on the table. Uh, and it's 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 basically telling us that we were right. Uh, that we are right to put that that money in the budget, uh, because we're performing extremely well, still against the budget. Uh, and I've seen, actually seen April's numbers, and I think they changed it from twenty eight point eight percent to twenty eight point nine percent. So it's tracking along thus far this year very nicely. Any thoughts on this data? Okay, next up, financials. Donna, you're up.
I guess first thing I'm going to say is that you'll be happy to know that I've been training two people on payroll. So if something happens to me, you know, be so willing. Only to get that down in the next number two. As far as the financial statements go, I think everything, every department looks pretty good. There's nothing outstanding or. Out of the ordinary. I do want to let you know that I have submitted two reports for grants. One is the A R P, finished that, so we expended out two hundred and fifty five dollars, two hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. And the other four hundred and sixty five thousand is still allocated to the out there to be spent at a later date. The dash cams that we have now, I did submit for reimbursement for those and hopefully those can be installed in vehicles soon. Um, other than that, I am trying to get ready for the audit, which is just right around the corner. And I really don't have too much else to say. I mean, unless you want to hear about accommodation taxes.
Any questions or comments for Donna?
Donna, regarding the dash cams, they are going to be installed in first week of May.
Wow, there are thirteen of them, right? Are all of them going to be installed?
About all vehicles we have, we might have a Lexus, but two of the vehicles we have.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just want to say I'm grateful for Donna for taking time out of her schedule to train. On backup apparel, I, it has been the the city's Achilles heel, a critical vulnerability of ours. That Donna has spent single-handedly doing payroll for the entire time I've been here, and I would love to see Donna be able to take a vacation when it's not scheduled around payroll. So, thank you. Sure.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, last up, we have some bills to pay. I would like to point out under the, uh, under the the animal shelters budget, it'll show the hospital washer dryer and the offset of sixteen hundred dollars from Plan Petto. Also point out on the second page of the bills, uh, pretty good bills for the Lexi pole system. Um, this was a much needed addition to the fire department, Dan's talked about it. Um, but those are, there's some pretty hefty numbers.
And just so you know what Lexi pole is, this is, I think, what Dan was referring to about updating the 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 procedures of Lexi pole provides an online essential handbook. They've done it for police departments for years, but they they offer a fire department version, the city's looking potentially at them in a school version. But it is head and shoulders above the PDF handbook. You can push out updates to your employees, they'll send you legal updates. It's not a PDF or a paper copy that lays the lines and we forget about it. It's an interactive, dynamic way to keep your employees updated on legal changes, huge updates. You can have your employees certified and one by one, you'll know who's trained, who's not trained. Uh, it's a fantastic tool and well worth for that investment.
Yeah, I was looking at the bill for those tires, Tony.
They have some cost of tires. They have plans to set a tire.
Good thing we only have to replace them once every ten years.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay. Any questions on the bills or concerns? I would entertain a motion, please.
We're at the bill.
Just a second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Thank you, all were in favor. At this time, we have backshot items. First up is the twenty twenty three Pride Parade temporary use permit. Lori, would you present that? And then I believe Elsa's on line as well.
Sure, Elsa is here. Um, Ruth.
Aye.
This is a new parade that Ledville is pretty excited about, actually, I am pretty excited about. Um, I just wanted to let City Council know that Elsa and myself and Mari have had a few meetings along with Street Department and the Police Department. This event, this parade, that happens to be on June seventeenth, which is a pretty busy weekend, has been given a rate in town that weekend. So Elsa and I talked about different timings and this just, this is what works. And the future, we might try to change it to a different weekend, but right now, but we've had several meetings. Um, the original plan was even to go down Ninth Street for traffic reasons, we thought it'd be easier to go on A. They've been more than amicable working with us. They're all sort of concerned about, we were concerned about city services being available since there is another event that weekend. And Elsa and her group is providing volunteers to fill in the gaps for our city services, which might be a little strange that weekend. So I just want to say thank you Elsa for working with us so well and having some good meetings. Um, and if she wants to add anything, that's all I have.
Yeah, also tell us about your event.
Well, this is Leadville's first pride parade. I am one of many on a pride committee. It includes Lake County Build a Generation, um, C four, Full Circle, and lots of individuals within the community, including C S U extension folks. Um, so I just, I also want to say thank you to all of you for considering this and I would echo everything that, I would echo everything that Lori said, we're very excited about it and happy to see it happen. However, city council needs to see it happen.
Thank you. Any questions for Elsa or Lori? I do appreciate the flexibility in going up A Street instead of nine, but that was great. Uh, the street department and and police department both kind of dove into this and made sure that they have the the bandwidth to help help Elsa and the pride committee put this on. So, nice effort. Okay, I would entertain a motion, please.
When that moves to approve the temporary use permit for freights, Leadville to host Leadville Parade, Pride Parade on Saturday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty three, from four P M to four twenty P M.
Three seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
This is one of the first parades that I've seen go the opposite way.
It is.
And I want to approve it just for that reason.
We, uh, we did have meetings with Cameron from Lifetime is her event uh, that is happening that weekend. We did coordinate with her and she has no issues with the permit as it's presented to you. Uh, she feels like it's, you know, she's got shuttles going for her event and uh, pretty much feels as though hers will be wrapped up by three o'clock, so sees no conflict at all. Sorry, that all the departments did approve and I got their signatures back on the T U P.
Amazing.
I know. This is, this is, this is absolutely a team effort. Uh, we we've instituted a new program where you are going to see those wet signatures on the T U Ps so that the applicant knows that it, when it comes before you, and you know it's been approved from all the departments and if there's any questions. So it's a smooth process. We know what the applicant wants, we know we can do it. So when it comes before you, you know that everybody's on the same page. So thank you, Lori, for, Lori's been told she can tattle on anybody who doesn't sign on time.
Steve, you'll be given an opportunity to speak at the end of city council meeting. Thank you. Uh, at this time, roll call, please. Uh, yes.
That's number for Jenny.
Yes.
That's number for Ruth now.
Yeah.
That's number Bill.
Yes.
That's number Minna now.
Yes.
That's number Craig.
Yes.
And Mayor for them.
I think we lost it.
Oh. If she comes back, I'll give her an opportunity to vote. In the meantime, we'll move on. At this time, we have the appointment of Joey Edwards to be planning and zoning commission.
All right, good evening. So this is me presenting the site. Uh, so, got one in your packet, provides some background from page seven seven of your packet. But Commissioner Edwards has been serving as an alternate planning zoning commissioner or planning zoning commission uh, since January this year. Mr. Edwards also serves as a commissioner on historic reservation commission. So he's fully involved. Uh, Mr. Edwards also serves on the county's planning zoning commission. So, um, I don't know how he sleeps. Um, so, uh, this service is, will be replacing our Commissioner Zoom, who just resigned a few weeks ago. Uh, after serving since twenty twenty one. Uh, the service has priority consideration for a code for a six-year permanent appointment, which staff is recommending. Uh, his background information is included on page seventy nine of your packet. As I mentioned, he's been serving on both city commissions already. Uh, Mr. Edwards owns a real estate, I'm sorry, they have a, uh, was where retail business here in in town, has a, towards, also a general contractor. And, uh, he has several, um, long-term rental residential units here in town. Um, so we very much appreciate his involvement in both of our commissions so far. And staff have recommended, um, that the mayor appoint, um, Mr. Edwards for a six-year term, um, beginning today with the consent council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Edwards, do you like to speak to city council?
I'd just like to say thank you, city council, for your consideration. It is, uh, an honor and an obligation to be involved in the committees that we're on. And it's nice to be involved in a little town like Leadville that's growing as fast as it is. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Uh, Mr. Edwards, we're thinking of making this a perpetuity. What do you think?
Thank you, but no.
I would say six years goes pretty close. Yeah. Any questions for for Joey? Okay, then, uh, are there any objections on city council for the appointment of Mayor Edwards to play in the zone? Okay, thank you. Hearing none, as Mayor of the City of Leadville, I appoint Mr. Joseph Edwards of five oh seven Alder Street Street for a six-year term of the planning and zoning commission with the term expired. with the term expiring for eighteen twenty twenty-nine. Joey, thank you very much. We really appreciate all that you do for the City of Ledville.
Thank you, Meg. Thank you, City Council.
Yeah. Okay. Next step. Yeah, he's a good step. Uh, the first one is uh an I G A for the City of Ledville and Lake County concerning law enforcement mutual aid. We had this before us recently. Who was not ready for primetime. Uh, we believe it is now.
Sure, address the, the two changes that uh you will see. Spend correcting. And um our city attorney worked with county attorney to come up with agreeable language regarding the mediation provision that the councilmen agreed you have requested. So those were all the changes that needed to be made. They were pretty straightforward and we're happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for for this I G A? I, I have one. It's, it's, I don't know if it's a question of concern. It may be unimportant. But when, and maybe I just misunderstand how, how nine-one-one dispatch works.
Oh, this isn't the nine-one-one.
No, I, I understand that, but this applies to mutual aid. So they dispatch uh to a, to a crime scene. Do they clarify who the, the actual responding party should be between the sheriff and, and the city?
Your Honor, City Council, yeah, to answer your question, in the CAD system that they dispatch from, it will designate whether it's in the City of Ledville or in the county of Lake. So based upon that, the priority is to give it to that jurisdiction.
Gotcha.
Unless, of course, they're unable to. And then, again, that's where the I G A comes into. If all Ledville agencies were, officers were tied up, if something else happens in Ledville, then the county, and vice versa.
But also.
Always dispatch the units of the agency of that particular jurisdiction.
Right. Under dispatch, you know, one party could be there before the other one gets there. And it may not be, um, you know, so you feel like that's properly defined in here, so it'll be clear who is in command on that site.
A good example was what happened today, sir. Um, and that auto pit accident happened at Fifth and Harrison. The first unit that arrived was an S O unit because they were right inside of the county building. However, the agency that handled it was Ledville PD because that is our jurisdiction. We can assist each other, but we know it's primarily based upon the jurisdiction.
That's, that's perfectly helpful. Thank you very much. I just want to make sure that, that the requesting party is clear. And if it's not a requesting party, then it's based on whether it's in the city or the county.
Yes.
Gotcha. Any other questions or concerns? Have we fixed the issue where it talks about the five members of the board?
That's the nine-one-one.
Oh, one. One might.
The answer to that question is yes.
Okay. Then I won't ask it again. How's that for you? Okay. Well, I read them both at the same time, so. Uh, any other questions or concerns regarding uh this I G A between the city and county? All right, it's been a long time coming. Really pleased to see it. Um, I would entertain a motion, please.
Councilman, Justice moves to adopt resolution number eight, series of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Ledville and Lake County concerning law enforcement mutual aid. What's that?
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Or discussion? Roll call, please.
That's number three.
Yes.
That's number nine.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor for Tim Green.
Yes.
And Councilor.
Yes.
Councilor.
Yes.
And Councilor.
Yeah. Nice work, everybody. Thank you to the county.
Do we want to give Dana an opportunity to vote on?
Oh.
Now.
On the.
Data, uh, we, we uh voted on the temporary use permit for the Pride Parade. Um, would, would you like to vote on that?
Yeah, I seconded it. Did you not hear me?
We did not, sorry. Okay. Okay.
Sorry, I had some connectivity issues.
Okay, thanks. Thank you for, for being here and hanging in. Uh, yeah, so that's a yes vote for Dana. Well, thank you. Okay, next up, we have, oh, I'm sorry, yes, of course, we're going to take a short break. Uh, we need to produce some, some documents uh for this next I G A consideration. So we're going to take about a five-minute break. Will that be enough?
Uh, can you give us seven-ish minutes? We need to.
Six and a half, okay?
There are a lot of stairs.
We'll be back in a little while.
Okay.
Seven minutes. Yeah, that looks really long. There were, you know, personality conflicts between agencies that rely on dispatch, so sometimes dispatch is used as a tool or a weapon um to inhibit other people from doing their jobs. So uh where we came from, where we talked about this, um, with Chief Edwards and then with Sheriff Speckman was appointed, uh, we dug in and did research and realized that best practice was kind of creating a separate entity for emergency communications. Um, a big example, two big examples are Laramo County and Jefferson County. So in Jefferson County, uh, the county plus all the municipalities, plus all of their emergency responders pay into their separate E nine-one-one or communication center and that oversees dispatch. Um, so here's just some background on the, the history of it. Uh, so when the, the city and the county first entered the I G A, um, it was amended again in twenty eighteen and tonight we discussed the second amended and restated I G A, which will also have St. Vincent uh Hospital District as a party too. Um, next slide, please. So tonight, um, Chris, Claire and I were, uh, we just sent to you. Uh, so the Board of County Commissioners um has agreed with this approach. Um, and has sent us here to discuss it with you this evening. This is their intention moving forward. Um, get feedback from you guys to approve it and get feedback from St. Vincent's. Come back, so um it could, I, I'm under no illusions of this to be an iterative process. Um, so the proposal is to uh create a new Board of Directors for the E nine-one-one authority that will consist of the Lake County Sheriff, the EMS Director, Ledville Police Chief, the Ledville Fire Rescue Chief and Office of Emergency Management Director. Sitting ex officio on that board would be myself, um, the City Administrator. Um, for the executives um of the agencies I've just listed, they're also able to have a delegate on that board that can be, you know, go to those meetings uh in their, in their speed if they need to for attendance. Um, part of the I G A does say that um it's the Board of County Commissioners that's points the E nine-one-one board. Part of the I G A is required. Part of the I G A is requiring that the. You know, Sheriff Beckman wants to nominate himself that he has to nominate someone else. Or Chief Daly doesn't want to be on the board. He he doesn't need to nominate two people from the fire department. So that one person is the, you know, sits on the board and the other person is. Ultimately for the delegate. So then the Emergency Communications Center or Dispatch would move under the purview of the E nine one one Board of Directors. The E nine one one Board of Directors would hire an executive director which would oversee the Emergency Communications Center. Includes all of our emergency communication officers. Part of this I G A is that the E nine one one Board of Directors would determine the emergency telephone charge. So if you look at your cell phone bill, you'll see on there a government surcharge or government tax or fee. I think there's two, well, it varies actually depending on carrier that you have, but usually the two bucks or less. That goes into Lake County's E nine one one. So then if the E nine one one. Board of Directors wants to increase that by state statute, they can go up to a certain limit. If they want to go beyond that, then they need to go. To the State Public Utilities Commission or P U C to seek state approval for for a larger increase. And then also the E nine one one Executive Director, of course, Emergency Communications Staff and the E nine one one Board. Would develop annual budget and long range financial plans. That's the the basic gist. On this slide you will see, so the total E nine one one budget for fiscal year twenty three is a little over seven hundred thousand dollars. About half of that is our salary, wages and fringe. And then. You know, everything else is, you know, rolled into. Contract agreements, office and operating supplies, travel, trainings, all of those kinds of things that we need to have a high functioning Emergency Communications Center. The proposed budget structure currently is to award the Executive Director of the E nine one one Authority and the Board of Directors. To evaluate a three year rolling average of dispatch call volume, essentially divide that call volume. By the lead agency or divide the total E nine one one budget by those dispatch call volumes by the lead agency. And the agency would fund a portion of the E nine one one. Center, Communication Center. So if you want to see line by line, this is the line by line of what it looks like in there. And actually, if you could go to the next slide, Hannah, please, is more of a detailed breakdown. So we're talking about there so you can see the salaries, wages and fringe. If you look on the left hand side, the the bottom two bullets are are important because those would be the next. Or those are not new, but. Claire and then Mike McCard, our former CEO Director, used to sit on this board and worked on it. Plus Doug Lloyd, who is our communications consultant. But yeah, who handles radio equipment, all of those things, did an evaluation of the budget. So we will always need, you know, some amount for backup dispatch equipment to replace on an annual basis. We'll also need to, this E nine one one Authority Board will need to engage in new contracts. Which is the sixty thousand dollar number in the first bullet on the right hand side, training and education. That was increased significantly. There is a desire at the Emergency Communications Center now. And I believe by most of the people we propose to be on the board. For emergency communication officers to receive emergency medical dispatch training. That means when you're on the phone with Dispatch and someone is having a medical. Incident crisis or episode, potentially the the Emergency Communications Officer can talk you through steps of what to do. If the ambulance is is a long way out or something you can do to stabilize whoever you're with. Next slide please. So looking out towards twenty twenty five, what we would like to see for the Emergency Communications Center. It's having the director, under the director would be having two communication supervisors. So you can think of the left hand as your third twelve hour shift and the the right inside as your second twelve hour shift. To ensure that we have full, full coverage, that there's never any dispatcher who is on by themselves. Which we have run into issues with that in the past and currently. You know, it is a hard job. So having having someone there for backup, for bathroom breaks, you know, just the. Normal things you need to be there. So that is the the looking out towards twenty twenty five goal. Feel free to ask.
All the blue ones are the ones that are funded under this agreement and the white ones are the ones that are not yet funded going into twenty twenty five. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
How how many shifts can it be? I mean, how many days have they been working these twelve hours? Three, you know, twelve hours, yes. I don't know if they're current, you know, if they're current. First format I believe is three days on, four days off, four days on, three days off and rotate back and forth.
Each twelve hour shift then?
Yes.
Good.
Then with the new E nine one one Board, we knew, you know, the director, you know, that can be evaluated. With the staff up more and having more communications officers that's getting, you know, trying to adapt.
Another question. I know that on my normal job with Forest Service, we're having a terrible time staffing any of our. Dispatch centers. In fact, some of our dispatch centers, we don't have any. Personnel in them, maybe just the center director themselves. How how is the retention here for our emergency communications centers?
Great question. Yeah, we are under no illusion that maybe by twenty twenty five, we could have all these positions staffed. However, our attention, we had some retirements and some turnover, but I think for the past six, eight, nine months. Has held pretty constant in staffing levels. We've actually had a lot of interest. With folks wanting to become communications officers, which has been great. We also do have mutual aid agreements with Chaypee County Sheriff's Office and their dispatch. So. In the event of those things, we can route our dispatch through Chaypee County, which we have done in the past. But that's certainly an issue that the the new E nine one one Board will need to address. Or continue to address. Something. So you have one that you can see it all. Yeah, yeah.
If money were no option, huh?
So here is an example of the call volume from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty two, November to November. So you can see there just the departments, the lead agencies. And, you know, their their percentage of use of the Emergency Communications Center. The proposal in the I G A would be having the Sheriff's Office, the P D, Fire and Rescue. And Saint Vincent. Pay into the the E nine one one Authority. Since they rely on Emergency Communications Center to be able to fulfill their jobs. Please note that the Lake County Search and Rescue, that will be rolled into the Sheriff's Office percentage of use because search and rescue is under the Sheriff's Office. Through, we have five or six work segments, we kind of decided that, you know, State Patrol, Park and Lot By, Little Bridge, Forest Service. And other people that we do call out, like it's probably not worth. The our resource investment to get them to be part of this I G A. That that can of course change in the future. And then if you do want to look at, so from twenty one, November twenty one to November twenty two. You can see the call volume, kind of how that shifts some of the percentages, how those go about. And then the last, you know, next slide please. So this is call volume by district. This was a proposal from the city administrator is looking at what it would be. By calls by district. So this is sort of Ledville and then everything else. It does not identify. Which agency responded for total calls into Ledville. Keith and his team are still working on that evaluation. And then you see the calls out to the county. Yeah, if you want to go to the last one, thank you. There's our contact info. I think you all know how to get ahold of us. So in sum, that is the proposal for you this evening is reconstituting the E nine one one Board, changing its membership to those five. People, the establishment of a budget and then having Dispatch move. Not physically yet, but move out of the Sheriff's Office, but be under the purview of. The E nine one one Board Authority and then having the E nine one one Director that oversees Dispatch.
That's a lot to absorb.
It is. I got a couple of questions if you don't mind. The first one is of the total budget. What percentage of that budget might be covered by the the E one nine one one funding? That that comes through the.
So that that will be up to the E nine one one Board, however. And in the I G A, what we, what is proposed in the I G A is that the salary for the Director comes out of that. And then that equipment upgrades and things like that come from the E nine one one fund. So the life cycle of dispatch equipment is three years or years?
Three years.
That's all. That's all. And so we're looking at eight hundred thousand dollars. In new equipment in the coming years, because we're already. We're past date on on the dispatch equipment we're using now. So is the intention in the I G A for to pay for the Director's salary, but then also to keep our investment in our technology and our equipment fresh. There's also one historically from the E nine one one fund, one dispatcher position was. One emergency communications officer position was paid for. So those are the three things called out in the I G A. And then it'll be up to the E nine one one Board and that Director to.
What does that funding look like on a yearly basis?
Yeah, so right now, so last year in twenty twenty two, we received just over a hundred and fifty K from that from that tax. We do have a healthy fund balance right now in the E nine one one fund because of the past years of non use. It's sitting just over three hundred K right now.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. You know, that E one nine one one fund, and this may have gotten fixed, but I mean, I remember years ago that a conversation around. It's not funded by any area codes that are not resident. Is that still true?
We. Yeah.
Oh, it's by building address. Okay, that's good to know because I think there was a debate about. You know, a lot of people carry their their area codes from wherever they've moved from and don't change it. Okay, good. That's that is great. That's great news. When do you think we're starting this? When are we starting this in terms of budgetary considerations?
Sure, that is a great question. So on Monday I will present this, we will present this to the Saint Vincent Hospital District Board of Directors. And that hopefully by, hopefully in this year, I know we're moving at the speed of government, but. I know this is a big change, but it is a worthwhile change and one that we can get through that will benefit our community. And benefit everyone who relies on emergency communications to be able to perform their jobs. So I I would like to see. You know, this, the the Board of County Commissioners is is ready to approve this. So I think when City Council and. Saint Vincent's approve it and the Board of County Commissioners will appoint the board. You know, instruct the board to work on hiring the E nine one one Director. So. Hopefully Q three, these changes can happen and.
But it's a it's a vital consideration, a budgetary consideration in twenty twenty three for all the parties, right?
Correct. And the last, the last discussion we have had is, you know, whenever, whenever the E nine one one Board is constituted and the Director is hired. That we can pro rate, we move the suggestion to be to pro rate whatever is left for the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay.
So yes, it would require. But to start to get over the habit of. Of funding this.
Did you consider appointing a a citizen representative to that board?
Sure. So in the past, it had had a citizen representative, I guess, where Betty, did she represent the fire department or just?
No.
Yeah. So and and then in the in the that first amended I G A had seven members. It's saying where we like. Do you per session, is that the seven was kind of cumbersome and we also wanted to rely on the expertise of our executives who. Use emergency communications for their jobs to be able to improve the Emergency Communications Center. It was also a consideration of, you know, in number board.
Thank you.
Any questions? Tracy, please.
It it comes up to an I G A across four agencies or departments. The only thing that. Things kind of unresolved is the section. One point oh seven B on changing the. Funding balance that it just says that if. You want to request a change to the process and submit a proposal like how many Board of County Commissioners. And then what? I mean, what about the rest of us?
That that's a great question and one we have considered. I think it. Is ready because the the E nine one one Authority with the county and the B O C C is the appointing. Forty for that. So if the E nine one one Board, I think we wrote in the pilot, it does need to be a super majority to change the budgeting process. And that needs to go to the Commissioners to change that. I'm open, you know, if if you do want it to go to City Council. And Saint Vincent as well to change that budgeting process. But the way, in the way we're thinking of that, because right now, there's various ways. To do the payments into the E nine one one Authority, if you will. So in Jeffco, for example. Chief Daly's department would pay a certain rate, her dispatch call, Chief Chavez would pay a certain rate. Same each each person would pay a certain rate. I don't think we're at, we don't have the sophistication yet to determine that rate for each agency. So that's where the five executives landed on 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 starting, yeah. But, yeah.
I guess. Because you've laid out how to do it, then the I G A, it seems like you need to lay out how to change the I G A also. Right?
Yeah. I think.
I believe there's should be provision there now modifications and really.
I think with Councilperson Lord since talking about is that. To change, to change the proposed three year rolling average budget.
Yeah, one point oh seven B of section A. H ninety eight. Ninety eight, ninety nine, eighty seven, ninety eight. And I have, I'm not like. Sorry, I don't have a scan below.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
I'm in the I G A.
Yeah, which division are you looking at? Was that H ninety eight?
Oh, the subsection. The party that made E nine eleven Board made requests to change to this process. And submit a proposal like having or the having permission.
Again, which section are you wishing?
One oh seven B and it's a subsection at the bottom of C of B, sorry.
What is the question?
I think to explain, well, to define clearly what the to change the budget process would look like and then. To have City Council and the Hospital.
I I would add all the boards.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can bring that back to your channel.
I would add, I would like to go back to my question about the the citizen representatives. I happen to think seven is a nice number. And I'd like for you to reconsider having a representative from the city and the county. Be a member, be members of that board.
As in an elected official or in a professional capacity?
I don't know the answer to that. I I assumed from an appointed or a volunteer position.
Okay, because we do, so currently we have Lori and I sitting as the ex officio members, right? So we will not be voting members. And of course, right, so the the sheriff does not report to me. But the fired thief and the police chief do report to the city administrator there for you. But we can explore adding a city council or county commissioner to the board? Or do you want a a representative of?
I I think it would just be worth considering having a citizen representative of the voice from. From that not necessarily from the professional side.
Okay.
Yeah, to your point, you can't add just one, you'd have to.
That too. And and that's what I'm saying, a city, a city, a person from the city, a person from the county would suffice for all three boards. Considering the same business is a district and then. I think that's worth considering.
Where do we think we are on this I G A in terms of approval tonight? Tim, what is your expectation in terms of approval on this I G A?
Like I said, I know it will be an iterative process. I still need to present this to the St. Vincent Board of Directors. So it'd be great, you know, in in May, I think we can have, you know, weekends. We can have another work session, but maybe towards the end of May, if we can have these these approved and the V O C C can appoint the board. And then the board can start their work. We do have a lot of the puzzle pieces. We have. A job description or a draft for the nine one one director for the board to react to and edit, see if it's their needs. Things like that. We already have, we've already ordered new communications material or equipment that just. Needed to be ordered and replaced, you know, created. So we will, like, it would be great to have it be done by May, but.
I think that's fair. This seems pretty close. That's my opinion. What is it, who else though?
I have the same concern as. Councilmember grants, but other than that, I'd agree that looks pretty good.
Uh, any thoughts, Lori? And where we are?
I had an opportunity to review both the documents and I the county incorporated many of the. Actually, I think all of the changes that I recommended. So I think I agree with everybody. It looks very close. So we'll see when the. Iterations come out in the last setting. But I think it looks good.
Erin, I know you've been thrown in the last minute, but do you have any thoughts on this I G A?
Um, I just first got it today to look at it, so I would like the more time to look at it. It looks fine so far from my my quick glance at it, but I do wanna definitely sit down with this and have a little more time with it. But I can I can touch base with Lori on that.
And and just so, Carmen did get a chance to look at it before we presented it to you all, and I appreciate that. Evan hasn't gotten a chance to look at herself. I think she should be able to look at it, but we we didn't have a city label review before we brought it to you.
Um, I I think we'll be looking forward to seeing where we are in May. But I think it it seems it seems like a nice work. It seems like nine one one is gonna come of age. You know, be nice for to have a home. That's a whole different, a whole other topic. Okay, um, will you take a check?
Yes.
Good, it won't be any good, but. All right. Any last thoughts from City Council? Great, thank you very much.
Right, we will work, booking another work session to discuss. Well, our own city councils for about the changes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for being here. And if we do a continuous, you have to do it to a date certain. I'm not sure if that's appropriate.
I was gonna try and hook up the. Five laws really good. I think if the. If the council just expresses an intent to provide guidance and that we have an understanding that it's gonna come back at a. Future meeting, I think that that's sufficient. We just will make sure that. It doesn't get uploaded, any of the decision doesn't get uploaded to this meeting date, that it gets uploaded to whatever meeting day we take action on.
Is that okay?
That's fine. It's just listed as a resolution on the gentleman, so.
Any other thoughts on that? We we think we're okay? Great, thank you. At this time, we have the public meetings planner. Any additions, deletions?
I'm I will for sure be remote next Tuesday for the work session.
Well, I'm also gonna say next Tuesday, I I've been invited to. And Cities of the Americas Summit at School of Mines and I will be back here. They don't even finish up till seven that evening, so. And that's in Golden, so I will not be able to attend that work session. Which will be twenty fifth next Tuesday.
Will the rest of us be here?
I, this is Dana. I will not be able to attend either the work session next Tuesday or on May ninth. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. I I think I think we should, my opinion is, I think you're right. I think we. But I don't know that we want to reschedule to a date certain right now because we have, you know, a lot building up on us right now. So I I know, Christian, you wanted this to to be resolved, but we really need a robust conversation with all the city council to make.
It's almost too late. Aren't we handing out licenses?
No, the licenses are already done for the next year. This wouldn't take effect. Whenever we decide, we wouldn't take effect until next April.
We can pump them.
Yes, I know Christian was anxious to get some answers, so he would know what to tell people in the community about what we're doing.
I I think, you know, it's important that we address whether we go one way or the other to the community. What we're moving forward with terms of short term until sooner rather than later, so that they can plan. What are action steps they feel is that to continue housing work accordingly, so. Though I understand that it wouldn't really take effect until probably even much later than than just the registration dates themselves. Because of the way that we handle it, so. It is urgent, but I understand that we want to have a robust conversation about it and I totally respect that.
All right, thank you very much. But any other, anything else on the meetings, but.
Correct, it's not happening?
Yes.
Okay.
I also, on May ninth, will not be able to attend. I will, however, have something prepared.
Thank you, thank you, Tim.
What is that?
That's a sandwich board.
And I will not be able to attend the charter on that day.
Okay.
I'll be present.
I'll be here, me too. On the second, when you think you will be here in the night then? Dana, on the, oh, you Dana, you said you would not be here on the night, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other, any other changes or thoughts on the meeting planner?
Um, I will not be present for the fifteenth conversation. Town hall, which also, May fifteenth should also be added to the calendar. And I will most likely not be present, but if I am, I will be virtual on the sixteenth.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate people's willingness to try to be virtual when they're not able to be to be present. Makes a big difference in terms of of the work of City Council, so thank you.
I can get through TSA and.
All right, Mayor's Report. I would say that this this thing at School of Mines is actually quite an honor and I'm looking forward to it. I'll be speaking. As a seminar there, and this will be mayors of North and South America that have mining operations associated with their municipality. And so I'm looking forward to that opportunity and should be fun, but it's gonna be a long bit. The next day is Rock Mountain PBS on that Wednesday, the twenty sixth. And I would encourage anybody who gets an opportunity to go see that, it's it's gonna be a free screening and also a panel discussion. On the Irish miners in Ludville and the Irish Memorial.
You do have to reserve tickets for it, F Y I.
I did, you know, there's no charge. I don't know if you guys are familiar with this. The county was saying, there's a manhole on the other side of Highway twenty four. With sixteenth and seventeenth street, and the county was was saying it was city responsibility. We've done some some investigation. It's not. And and we're gonna meet with Michael with Roadbridge, going to dinner and sit down with him next week and just discuss. We don't want to leave it at that. We still want want to offer cooperative effort if at all possible. And even C dot has is willing to come in with their vac truck and help us clean all that out to make sure this doesn't happen again. Is it froze and then it overflowed and flooded?
That's a family dollar?
Yeah.
No, where is this?
It's on the other side of the street, right next to the Wandermap.
Okay, thank you.
Between between the bookstore and the Wandermap, there's a manhole there that froze up and flooded. Some property there this this winter. And the county seemed to think that was our responsibility, but we, I went to C dot and they said, no, that's okay. So just so you guys know what's going on there. That's it for Mayor's Report. Dana, yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everybody about Future Town this Friday and Saturday. Friday's event is at six thirty at Freight that will have a conversation about the where we are headed. With soup and taro readings, if you want to know where you are headed. And on Saturday, there's an event from ten to noon at the library that C four is hosting. With recycling and plants and magic tricks and cookies. And then that evening at six thirty P M on Saturday, it is back at Freight with gorditas, which is should be plenty enough just to get you there. Just for that, live music, performance art and stargazing, so. Clear your calendars. I think it's going to be great.
I have it on my calendar, but you had me at cookies.
Cookies and gorditas and taro.
Also, on Friday evening is the Alpine Orchestra, their annual concert at the old church at seven thirty. Okay, council reports.
Then attending E D C meetings. And we had a couple of strategic meetings and also a few Zoom meetings. We've been working with Chris Rowan, who's with the barrel chatter, E D C. And also, at this last meeting, we were introduced to Lady May Kate Callenford. He is the founder of Strategy Architect. She's a, exactly, she's a strategic consultant. She provides coaching. It's one of the public and women consultants. She coaches organizations on how to be organized. And she is coaching us on how to formulate a clear vision. And give proper alignment to the board. Which will allow for us to achieve sustainable success. We're gonna have a few more meetings with her, just so we can get organized with with her expertise. Our purpose for now is to become an E D C. Purpose for now for the E D C is to become a working board. That will become more relevant and essential to the community. Our direction has been to narrow our focus. Form three committees that will identify and execute definitive actionable goals. Those committees are local workforce committee, business retention and attraction committee. And site development facilitation committee. It's up to develop vision, purpose and objectives for each committee. Is is what we're gonna be focusing on in order to be effective for. So I think, and and for now, we're not. Not looking at hiring an executive director for that. We need to get the board working on these. Objectives for each committee and everybody be on the same page so we can provide direction to the. So that's where the E D C is at. I think there's a lot of new energy and. And excitement for where where the E D C is headed, so. Just to keep you updated on.
You you attend so many boards now, so impressive. Can I break that? No, no, sorry. Thank you very much. Any other council reports?
I have slight one. On the fifteenth meeting, I would greatly appreciate if budget was a topic. I think it is important that we are completely transparent about how much money of the budget we are spending on police department with our community. As regardless if that is something that they're willing to change or not, it is important for the community to understand and. Go along with, if they don't feel like that connection is quite there to kind of. Inspire confidence in our police department. So that would be greatly appreciated. Unfortunately, I will not be there, but I will be hopefully organizing as seen as much as I can. To get as many community members, especially from Latino communities, to come out. Housing wise, everything's moving forward.
Thank you, Christian. Any other? Max, please.
Something I've been. Seeing more and more in my other job, working for service and working on incident management teams is. The discussion around security on on our facilities and the fact that. There's just, for lack of a better term, evil in this world when people can just show up and do whatever they want, right? And it doesn't matter if they're upsetting you, they're just looking for a target to go out and. Just be angry at, and they want to be successful. That's what they have. They've probably been failure all their life and they want to be success, this last success in their life. Right, their voice to be heard. I'm gonna say it again, this is a government building and I really feel strongly. That we should look into the security of this building for all the employees that are in here for the court. For city council, for all of our employees. I understand nothing against Chief Chavez and your and your your group of folks. But like anybody can enter this building. And that's the truth and. I'm certain that we make decisions that people aren't super happy about. So I'd ask, encourage us to, I don't know what the solution is. But I do feel that having an open building these days, there's maybe. Resting on, well, it won't happen in my town, right? Where these things, as I've gone, we've gone through some trainings. There's no rhyme or reason for these things pop up, right? And I don't like being in a fear based society, however. I think that's where we we are right now is that we should think about our security in our in our government facilities. So I'd ask the city administrator to think about that in the future. I don't know when that is. I know it's not in the budget. However, maybe something to think about. And I would probably report to, so, but it's, I mean, we had some folks on the incident management team I was on actually enter. Secure facility armed and that wasn't a very good, nobody knew what to do. In fact, what they did was they put their head down, pretended they weren't there. that wasn't a very good, nobody knew what to do. In fact, what they did was they put their head down, pretended they weren't there until somebody smart enough to recognize the threat actually was able to get that individual out of the building before anything escalated. Uh so um that's my first point.
Thank you.
To think about it. And and also, I mean, I'll start this next one with like a, you know, about a decade ago, one of my good friends from Son County went over to uh ski in a ski mountain area. Uh race called control the last years, and there was this huge race with huge waves of people and grandmothers up on the top of, you know, on top of passes cheering people on, a thousand people lining these people just going up and over, right? When I came back to ask him how he, uh uh how it was, he goes, Max, I've seen the future. Right? I've seen the future. And in the job I'm in right now, I uh can say that there's a lot of of um a lot going on on the front range that uh as a community, both in uh C eleven and Lake County, we have to prepare for both uh recreation wise and in uh of of a wildfire crisis strategy. Uh in less than two months, uh we were able to get, for example, a categorical exclusion through, it's a neat thing, for a three thousand acre fuel break um from conception to draft their signature. And uh and that's one of a dozen things that is occurring over there, shuttle systems for fourteeners. Um other fuel breaks around uh the city of Abgreen, uh the city of Blackcomb, Central City, uh working with partners. Uh lots of big ticket items, facility master plans. And uh there's, there's been a lot of, I mean, personally, I'll be perfectly honest, I'm pretty honored that uh we as a city council in the last uh three years or or so, we've worked on some of these bigger ticket items such as getting a city administrator. We've been able to uh get capacity with folks like Chapin uh and other folks to help out Don Schneider. We did get a short term rental cap in. We worked on snow removal. We got paving started. We put up sidewalks. And the list goes on and on. Uh but that being said, I personally think that um uh my future is uh that my voice isn't being heard anymore, and we're caught in the drove rooms here in the city. And uh I would prefer seeing us be more in the future uh and thinking outward. Uh I've given up the chance and thought that perhaps uh actions that I'm taking today would actually affect my children. It's actually my children's children now that we have to think about. We don't have a recreation center. Uh we may have a justice center. Uh and um what are we doing for, as a as a ten-year plan or more for our our community? And so um without my voice being heard, I I think my fact, my time is best being served off this city council. And uh so I will be leaving as soon as I have replacement hopefully in May. And I wish you all the best of luck. Um and I've been honored to serve in the city council, but it's time for me to um put my time elsewhere where I could be utilized more.
Thank you, Max. I would say, and you and I talked about it, I I think you have an important voice and leave it at that. So. Okay, uh any other uh city council reports? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, uh we would like to hear from the public. Uh anybody in the public would like to speak, please come up, introduce yourself, your address, and you have three minutes.
At that, that's seven years, so. All right, um I I guess two issues I can live this down to. Uh one, there is a, I've had mixed responses from the police department over the last forty-three years enforcing things. This is no negative reflection on our energy. This is a reflection on the law. Um so we have a guy downtown, uh he lives in his, apparently lives in his car, and he has on the on the windshield of the car tranny shut up. Uh this is hate speech. Uh I'd like to see this effectively uh sanctioned, and I would like to see this uh no, I more than I values free speech, but this is hate speech. It should not be uh allowed. Uh there should be steps taken to take to make sure that this is uh ameliorated somehow. Um and he's downtown all the time, and he's down on my street doing repairs and doing Rubens trucks. Um. So on that uh note, um uh the other issue is, so that that took up a minute, right?
Yes.
Minute and a half. Okay, so Colorado passed some gun legislation. And um the statement is uh and I do. Um March twenty seventh, Representative Parenti said uh victims of gun violence should have the opportunity to seek for justice in court within this reaction, as it contributed to harm that was bestowed upon them progressively. Now we're at two minutes. Uh so we have watched the tobacco industry uh get addressed for the damage to data on the communities individuals. We have watched the opiate industry uh get addressed for the damage that they've done to communities and individuals. Now gun violence is getting uh manufacturers are getting the drawn in by by our laws. Uh they're being made the litigants. Now we need to address the end, the another industry that has done damage to the people in our state, and that is the real estate industry. Um they accelerate gentrification. Um realtors not go on on government bodies making government land use decisions. They make decisions that benefit their industry, and as I've seen with Mr. Rabbit, I'm done talking.
Thank you, Mr. Prestash. Is there any other uh public comment at this time? Okay, thank you all very much. At this time, it is eight twenty-three, and the city council is adjourned. Yeah.